Bothell City Council is back in session. And next up is AB 18033, King County Solid Waste Draft Comprehensive Plan. And here to present is Sabrina Combs.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor and Council, my name is Sabrina Combs, and I am your Sustainability and Projects Administrator. For this presentation, I'm going to have Meg Moorhead from King County Solid Waste Division present. She is the King County Solid Waste Strategy Communications and Performance Manager.
There you go, Meg. Good evening, and it's good to be here to talk solid waste with you on this evening. Here to talk to you about the King County Draft Solid Waste Management Plan. It is out for public review right now through March 8th. Although King County leads the development of the plan, it actually is a plan to guide the solid waste management services in unincorporated King County as well as in our 37 partner cities, which includes Bothell. The only cities in King County that aren't part of the regional system are Seattle and Milton. The plan is required under state law and also under our inter-local agreements with our 37 partner cities. It's led, the writing is led by the county, but it's done in collaboration with two advisory committees. One multi-stakeholder committee called the Solid Waste Advisory Committee that has haulers, citizens, others in it. And then also the Metropolitan Solid Waste Advisory Committee that has representatives of the cities in the system. It's basically a plan that's going to guide how to prevent, recycle, and dispose waste in efficient, cost-effective, and environmentally protective ways. And it's got a horizon of the next six to 20 years. It also has a draft environmental impact statement out at the same time as the draft plan with a deadline of comment of March 8th. So a lot of people don't know what is in the regional system. So let's talk a little bit about the roles of the different entities in the regional system. It serves about 1.4 million people. King County is the regional service provider, and at some of these presentations, I get asked questions about curbside collection and, you know, how does the county deal with that? Well, actually, we don't provide curbside collection. We're a wholesale provider of disposal services at our regional landfill, the Cedar Hills Regional Landfill outside of Maple Valley. And we also operate a system of transfer stations and drop boxes where the trucks that collect curbside garbage bring the garbage to the transfer stations where it's consolidated for transport up to our regional landfill. So we do transfer stations and disposal. The collection services are provided by cities either directly, like the city of Inumclaw, or under contract with local haulers, as many jurisdictions have. So the collection is all in the realm of the cities, and in the unincorporated area is done directly under regulation of the state. We rely on private sector partners to do the collection as well as to process recyclables. The recyclables that are typically picked up at curbside are brought to private facilities for processing. So we operate a public-private system to do different parts of the service. So this is a little map of just what happens once it leaves your house. Where does it go? If you start at the top, it picks, gets, the garbage gets picked up curbside, it goes out to the King County Transfer Station, where if it's yard waste, it might go along the orange lines to a private composting facility. If it's garbage, it might go along other lines to the landfill. And then if it's recyclables, it would go along the green lines over to private facilities for recycling. One thing I haven't mentioned here is actually beyond the Cedar Hills landfill, we collect landfill gas and process it into renewable gas for resale regionally. So that's kind of how it all works. Now, what's in the plan? Under state law, we're required to cover certain topics, and you'll see chapters that cover what our existing system is. How do we forecast the future of our business and evaluate progress? What are we doing for sustainable materials management? And most people call that recycling, but our regulators, the Department of Ecology, likes to think about the whole life cycle of materials. They use the sustainable materials management terms that you'll see here. Transfer and processing, and then disposal and landfill management, finally, finance. All of these have goals, policies that are designed to last the entire life of the plan, and then more specific actions under each goal and policy to say how we might embark on implementing those longer-term goals and policies. So the last time we updated the plan was in 2001. A few things have changed. And this is the first time we're having an opportunity to bring in a couple of issues that have emerged in the region as important, including equity and social justice and allowing that to be considered in the way that we design and operate our system, as well as climate protection. So this plan brings in those two issues in a way that wasn't possible back in 2001. So let's talk about three major areas where we're focusing public comment. Although lots of issues are addressed in the plan, we're really trying to focus the public comment on a few big areas where decisions are being made. Here in material, sustainable materials management or recycling, for the first time, we're adding an interim recycling goal of 70%. Now, this has been used a lot over the last decade in the county, but it was never adopted in the original plan. So this is being put out as kind of an interim goal on the way to zero waste of resources that have economic value. 70% is an ambitious goal. The current recycling rate, which we get kind of a few years behind schedule from ecology, is 52% countywide. In city of Bothell, just for comparison, you look at your single-family recycling rate, you're doing pretty well at 62%. So the recycling actually varies a lot over our system. We've got folks who have a single-family recycling rate of as low as 30-some percent, others that have over 60%, like Bothell. 70% of what's being landfilled today could be recycled. So that's a resource that we're hoping to divert from the landfill and put to productive use in our economy. So how do we get to that interim goal of 70%? The plan provides a menu of actions. Focusing on preventing waste and reusing products before it even gets into the regional system. Getting manufacturers to take responsibility for their products at end-of-life, that's called product stewardship. Using a number of different approaches to promote recycling, including education, which is frequently used in the different parts of the system. Incentives like the grants that are issued for cities to implement different recycling programs. Mandates are available, such as banning the disposal of yard waste in garbage bins. And infrastructure improvements. Improvements at our transfer stations to allow more space and variety for recycling. Now, we had asked our partner cities, should we all march along the same path, doing the same things in the same timeframe so that we can reach 70% in a predictable timeframe? Our regional partners felt like they needed more flexibility to address their local situation. Some cities have very large commercial base of customers, like Tuckwilla with the South Center. Others are primarily single-family residential, so they're at different starting points in terms of the customers that they're working with, and also different starting points in terms of the percent recycling. So this plan provides a menu of actions that people can choose from. It needs to be a big enough menu to encompass what all of our, the county and the cities want to do over the next six to 20 years, but it doesn't mandate a certain pace or mix of actions for any individual jurisdiction. So let's talk about this second major area where policy choices are available. And Sabrina asked us to address what's different in the transfer component of this plan compared to the old plan. The old plan had a system of modernization scheduled. We had the 2001 plan and then a 2007 transfer plan that had a schedule for modernizing the old system, which was mostly built in the 1960s. And we'll talk a little bit about what's different in this plan compared to that system of modernization that was envisioned before. But just to give you a sense about how much material is being dealt with where in our regional system, Bow Lake is the transfer station that you see if you're driving south on I-5 and it's kind of off to the east above Tuckwilla. There's a big industrial facility, that's Bow Lake. That's our station that deals with about a third of the county's waste. So about a third of the county's waste is going through that station. The next busiest station today is Houghton, which is in Kirkland. This is one of our oldest stations, hasn't been modernized yet. It's our second busiest, and it's actually in an area that's growing the fastest. So it's a fast-growing, busy area. Algonah is down South County. It's being modernized at this point. Factoria just recently opened with a new modern facility that is in Bellevue and then Shoreline, right? And you can see how the smaller stations shake out. So why have we been undergoing modernization of our transfer stations? One is we've got more customers, both commercial and the self-haulers. You know, people are just bringing their spring cleaning from their garages up to the station. And with more users, we need to have more space to accommodate the increased traffic, get people through faster without queuing up too long. And with the safety concerns, the separation of the commercial traffic from the self-haul traffic. So that's part of what we're trying to accomplish. Expanded recycling services. The old stations didn't have recycling services available. For example, the Algonah station right now is being modernized, but the old station has no recycling at the station. And that's a service that people have asked for, and that's being built into the new stations. Compaction. When we pack the garbage into containers before we truck it up to the landfill, we can reduce truck traffic by about a third. That means you've got less traffic on the roads, less wear and tear on the roads, less greenhouse gas emissions. So it's an advantage to have it compacted, and the old stations didn't, don't have that feature. And finally, sustainable building design. We build in modern, green building standards like LEED or Living Building Challenge so that we have energy-efficient facilities that cost less to operate. So what's different about this plan? The old plan recommended transfer improvements, and this plan that's out for public review offers options for the Northeast area. The Northeast area is the only one that hasn't had a new station either built or initiated. So the choice still remains, should we update that part of the system or not? We still have the choice. Does cost money? We want to have a public dialogue about what we should be doing there. So in the plan, you'll see three options offered. One is just keeping the 1960s-era Houghton Station as it is. It doesn't have enclosed sides. It's kind of a residential neighborhood, so there have been some issues there. Another option is to build a new Northeast station with the features that I listed in the earlier slides, similar to the new stations that we've built elsewhere in the service area. And then the third option is to have a combination of facilities. Maybe keep the Houghton Station for self-haul customers only, and maybe build a somewhat smaller commercially-oriented station elsewhere. So we're taking public comment. The county executive is going to consider that and other information before he transmits a plan to the county council for action. So there will be one option recommended as part of the executive proposed plan. Okay, disposal. That's the third area where we're trying to focus public comment. Again, unlike the old plan where it just had a recommended approach to use our Cedar Hills landfill for as long as we can because it's been a cost-effective solution, and then move to exporting the waste to an out-of-county landfill. That's what was in the old plan. In this public review plan, you'll see three different options, similar to what was presented in the transfer chapter. But all of the options have to rely on how much capacity we have left that's already been built in our landfill. You know, we keep thinking that we're going to reach capacity at the landfill, and we've been able to stretch it longer through improved practices and also developing new capacity. And so we are just finishing a new cell of capacity at Cedar Hills. You can kind of see the blue line where by, we're kind of using a little bit of that capacity every year until in about 2028, we think we'll have exhausted that capacity and will need another option. 2028 is not a magic number. Our business is very closely tracked with the economy. When the economy is booming, people buy more, they throw away more, and we get more garbage showing up at our door. When the economy slows down, the opposite. People keep their old things, they buy less, we get less garbage at our door. So we're constantly adjusting these estimates of how long the landfill will last based on how the economy's going and what different practices are being used. So 2028, we'll need something else. What might it be? Three different options for beyond 2028. Each of them has their advantages and their challenges. We can develop more capacity at our Cedar Hills landfill. That would have the advantage of continuing a more than 50-year-long process of locally disposing waste cost-effectively, right here in King County. It has energy recovery through recovery of landfill gas and refining it and reselling it as renewable energy. Challenges related to it are that we would need to get council approval for the new, for the new developed cells. We would need to amend our permits. We have some buildings that the landfill is kind of the left, upper-leftmost picture there. We have buildings on top of areas that are permitted for refuse. So we've got some office buildings, that sort of thing. So if we were to develop new capacity, we would need to move those buildings to make room for the refuse, and that's an issue. Of course, we need to continue to be good neighbors to the community there. Export waste by rail to an out-of-county landfill is a second choice. This is something that's used by city of Seattle, Snohomish County, a number of folks in the region. It's a viable option. There are a number of out-of-county landfills that have enough capacity for our waste for a long time. It would end up privatizing a big part of the county, of the regional system in terms of long-haul transport by rail, and then the remote disposal in landfills out of the county. It has some challenges in terms of, you know, negotiating contracts in time. You know, weather-related disruptions and capacity constraints at the rail. Having our transfer stations ready to compact the waste before we pack them onto rail cars because if you have uncompacted waste going hundreds of miles, it's not an efficient system. And then finally, there's a choice of whether to build a waste-to-energy facility in King County. And this would be a, starting in 2028, you'd start to put all of the county's waste to a waste-to-energy facility. And we had a consultant report suggest that mass burn facilities are the best to consider for King County's waste stream. That has advantages in terms of it could reduce the volume of the garbage that goes in by 90% and the weight of that garbage by 75%. It could increase the recycling rate by as much as 2% by recovering metal from the ash. And it could help offset some of the costs through sale of electricity. Some of the challenges with it include citing the facility, cost, making sure that we have adequate material committed to the facility so it can operate efficiently. If you don't have enough material, it doesn't operate as efficiently. It has some of the waste export issues that the export-by-rail option has because you've got 25% of the weight needs to be exported. It's by its ash that needs to be exported, and then some of the waste that can't be burnt also needs to be exported. So you've got potential for weather or capacity-related rail disruptions with this option as well. Again, after taking public input on the three options, the executive will review the input, look at available information, and make a recommendation before he transmits it to the county council for action. This is a time-critical decision. If you can imagine, you deal with capital projects all the time in your city. 10 years may seem like a long way off, but 10 years to build a major facility, for example, like a waste-to-energy facility, is practically tomorrow. So a decision as part of this plan will ensure that we can get a timely start to have no gap in service in 2028 when we need to have an alternative in place. So just many things go into the consideration for which disposal option to choose. Recycling rates, environmental impact, all those things. But certainly, cost is a significant issue that our partners care about, and this just demonstrates some of the dollars per ton. This isn't the total rate impact of the alternatives, just the component that's put towards disposal. With the red line on the bottom being the further development of our current landfill. The green kind of in the middle being the dollars per ton for exporting by rail to an out-of-county landfill, and then the blue line being the waste-to-energy facility. So we focused on the three big policy areas, recycling, transfer, and disposal. There are also other elements in the plan. And the one thing I should point out out of the other elements is finance. We currently make almost all of our money to run the system off of a charge per ton of garbage that comes through our transfer station. It's called a tipping fee. And this plan allows us to continue to collect our revenue that way. However, there have been some issues raised about certain parts of our system. Costs are fixed and don't rely on how many tons of garbage are coming through. If we've got a transfer station, if we have 10 tons or one or 100 tons, we still have a transfer station that needs to be operated. This plan allows us to look at other ways that we might configure the tipping fee in the future to better match fixed cost with fixed elements of our revenue stream. So where are we at? This is a long process. It's been since 2001 that we last updated the plan. We are more than a year into the update process. We worked since fall 2016 with our advisory committees to come up with this public review draft plan. We're right now, right in the middle of this timeline with the 60-day review period on the plan and the DEIS. There's a simultaneous state review occurring. The state gets 120 days, so they start the same date that the public started, and they get a couple more months to review it. Once we get back the public and the state review will incorporate that into an executive proposed plan. And from there on out, it is largely driven by the state-mandated approval process. We need to send it to the county council, including the regional policy committee, for approval first. Then it, once they approve, it goes on to the cities, and a critical mass of our partner cities need to also approve the plan before then it goes to the State Department of Ecology for final approval. So it's one heck of a process, at least three years long, you can see here. So how can you comment? We're trying to get people to go to our website. That's a great way to learn more about the plan. There's an online questionnaire. There are video clips. There's ways to send a letter, an email, information about open houses that were conducted. Here, we've, we sent notifications out to over 1,100 stakeholders. We've got flyers we're handing out at our transfer stations. We've got social media ads and events. We've got webpage information. And we did have public open houses. I don't know if any of, they were, about 35 people attended, all told. I think more people will be attending the, or looking for information on the web than in person. But these were conducted in various parts of our service area to allow people to get face-to-face information. Okay? I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Who has questions? Councilmember Agnew.
So at some point in time during your little comment, and I appreciate the presentation that you gave us, you got me a little excited when it said Houghton hasn't been modernized yet. Now, are we still keeping the Houghton Station? Are we going to modernize it? Are we looking for another site?
What's, what happened under the old plan is that the policy holds until something different is decided, that Houghton will remain open until replacement capacity is available. So if we don't build a new Northeast station, if through these three options, the keep Houghton just the way it is, is selected, then Houghton would keep on operating. We considered doing a demand management experiment that would have just no station in the Northeast area at all, and instead try to get folks to go to other stations, Factoria and Shoreline. Bellevue extended their inter-local agreement to come back into the regional system through 2040. They, together with the four-point cities who are also interested in extending their inter-local agreements, bring about 10% more tonnage back into the regional system, which makes it, it brings it to a point where not having a station of some kind in the Northeast is not, you know, the division doesn't consider that to be practicable. So it's just a matter of what kind of system, what kind of station we do there. Houghton as is. A new Northeast station, similar to what we've done in Factoria, or, you know, Bow Lake, or, you know, Shoreline, or a combination of those.
Yeah, it seemed a little odd to eliminate a station. That's your second busiest station in the entire county.
You know, and that kind of tells you how much our business can fluctuate in the recession. You know, with, when five cities had not extended their inter-local agreements, and we thought their tonnage was going to go elsewhere, and we had a drop of tons in the Great Recession. That's what generated the question about whether we could do demand management instead of a new Northeast station. But times have changed. Our tons are back up with the strong economy here, and now we have those five cities looking as if they're all going to come back into the regional system. So it's a, it's a new situation.
Now, are you guys prepared for the influx of population that we're going to have over the next, they're saying 1.8 million people by 2050?
We are constantly keeping tabs on that, and yes, we are planning both our transfer and our disposal systems to accommodate the foreseen growth.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. I'm
One of the options for Houghton was not to remodel it, is that correct? And why is that?
It's, it costs money to build a new station, and there are some folks who would like to save money and think that Houghton works pretty well right now. To keep Houghton going, it was built in the 60s, it doesn't have modern features. You would have to invest some capital dollars in fixing it up some. For example, those scale houses built in part on refuse, and so it's sinking a little. So we would need to, you know, reinvest some in keeping it going as is, but, you know, it's an open question. We haven't embarked on that project yet. It will cost money. The cost would be distributed across the whole, all the customers in the regional system, just like the cost of Victoria upgrade was distributed across the whole customer base. So you folks up here are helping to pay a little bit more so that Victoria could be modernized, and the same would be true if we were to modernize or build a modern station in Northeast. You know, the folks down in Bellevue would be paying a little bit more to help pay for a new Northeast Station.
Anyone else? Councilmembers.
This is a question thinking out loud. Because I'm thinking of, it's not just coal cars that get people's attention. And I know when trains started moving down along the Columbia bringing garbage from Canada, folks in Eastern Washington started flipping out. So my question to you is, has, I'm assuming that if we have to move our garbage out of our county somewhere else, it's going to be heading east?
Yeah, the biggest landfills out there tend to be Eastern Oregon, Eastern Washington.
Okay, so my question to you is, has there ever, because I feel like if we are asking, and maybe this is a big ask, but if we are asking to move our solid waste through people's communities, has anyone ever surveyed the preference as to whether they would like solid waste coming in as it is, compacted, or would they like it in ash form? Has that question ever been asked?
No, it hasn't.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and I've learned a lot about garbage the last few months. So interesting that you listed some, the stations that we currently have in our area, in our region. Woodinville mentioned in a past committee meeting that they actually have a recycling station.
You know, I, I'm talking about the elements of our county regional system there, but I also mentioned that we have a mix of public-private facilities that we rely on in the system as a whole. There's a waste management private transfer facility operating, I think, just outside of Woodinville's city limits. That, I think that's what they're referring to. It's not part of the county system. It's a private facility.
Recycling facility?
Yes, yeah.
So the reason I bring this up is because I wanted the rest of the council to hear this and the city manager as well, but Woodinville brought up a point that by having that facility within their boundaries, it causes a huge impact on their roads, to their community.
Yeah.
And so when we talk about siting stations, there's a cost associated with siting those stations, but there's also another cost associated to the, to the community that that station's sited in. And I didn't realize that until listening to the cities talk about the impacts, like how much of an impact Factoria's having in Bellevue, how much of an impact Kirkland is having on, from Houghton. So one of the things that, you know, Councilmember Agnew brought up was revitalizing Houghton. And you had mentioned there's a cost to revitalizing Houghton. There's also a cost to building a new station.
Yes, there is, yeah.
And so the question that I would have on that would be, who, how does that get paid for? You'd mentioned that we would help pay for Factoria. How are we helping to pay for Factoria? Is that through taxation? Or is it through the hauling that's going, that's actually going to that station?
Okay, that's a good question. We pay for the regional system through a tipping fee, a charge per ton that comes through the county transfer station. So all of the county's costs, well, actually, when you see your curbside bill, actually, only about a third of that is for county's costs. The rest is for your collection contract or another cost. So that third that you see in your monthly curbside bill, that goes towards all of the county's programs. Although it's charged at the transfer station, it's actually funding our recycling programs, our operation of our landfill, our maintenance and monitoring of nine closed landfills in the regional system, and the construction and maintenance of the transfer system. So when that curbside truck that is bringing your trash to the transfer station goes over the scale, part of what that, part of what they're charged is going to come back to the county to help pay for the transfer station. So we'd estimated for a new Northeast Station, it might cost the curbside single-family customer about 50 cents a month more to, across the entire regional system, to fund that new transfer station.
Okay, so average homeowner might see 50 cents increase per month for their garbage. Is that correct?
Right. And that, that extra increment would go towards funding a new station, yeah.
Okay, so that's a little bit better number than what I think I heard in the last meeting, but what was interesting is points were brought up about that 50, that little 50-cent piece here and there is adding up, and it's actually hurting members of the communities like seniors. So that was something that I wanted to just bring up. Also, you, the cost to, the cost to build the facility that you talked about burning and things like that versus transporting our garbage, is there a equity position that's better one way or the other? Meaning that there's a cost associated with it, and we talk about equity and justice, right? You talk about that here in your presentation. If you transfer the outside Eastern Washington or Eastern Oregon, what is, how do you determine the cost difference between those two alternatives? Transporting it out or doing other facilities here?
Yeah, the, we've got a lot of experience operating and expanding the landfill, so we estimated based on our 50 years of experience with the landfill what it would cost to build new cells to dispose of garbage there. In terms of the export costs, we had assumed characteristic export contracts similar to that negotiated by the City of Seattle for their services, where they have one contractor who's their main contractor for export. That contractor figures out the intermodal facility subcontract where the truck containers are transferred to rail. They negotiate the access to the rail lines themselves for the 300 to 400 miles of transport to the out-of-county landfill. And then those providers also provide the disposal added a landfill in the remote site. And so that's where the cost came. We figured City of Seattle negotiated pretty, would negotiate a pretty good deal, and we would just, for the sake of this planning decision, assume that we would have a similar sort of deal and similar sort of system. Coming back to the concern about equity and social justice, there are two different aspects of it, and I'll just give some examples of how the plan addresses the two aspects. One is financial equity. Are those least able to pay, given some options under the plan? And yes, the plan does authorize, doesn't make us do it, but it gives us the space to do low-income discounts. And that's something actually that we're actively considering as part of our rate structure. There's another kind of equity, and that's access to service. Sometimes our regional partners call it geographic equity. And you can see it two different ways. If you're right next door to a facility, you might think, boy, this isn't great to have this, this transfer facility right next door to me. On the other hand, if you only have to drive 10 minutes on a busy weekend to do the disposal that, at the transfer station, it might be viewed as a convenient service that should be equally distributed across our service area so that nobody has to drive too far. So, you know, there are lots of different ways of thinking about equity, both financial and geographic.
Okay, and I just, I just have a couple more. So the, when you talk about transporting via rail, in your opinion, is the rail, when we're transporting out to those facilities, they're going to fill up also, correct?
Those facilities are very large, and we estimate that they would have capacity for our waste for decades to come, very large. The difference in terms of the, you know, the further development of Cedar Hills is that even if we do further development at Cedar Hills, our local landfill, it might be more cost-effective in the, in the short haul, but at about 2040, we would, we'd be needing to look for another alternative anyway. So we might choose in 2040 one of the other two alternatives offered in the plan if we choose to expand Cedar Hills now. But those out-of-county landfills have a lot of capacity.
Okay, and then if we had a natural disaster or something forbid were to happen, and the rail couldn't move, what would we do?
I can tell you what other folks who export do. They put the risk, that risk on the contractor. So it's up to the contractor to have in place alternative emergency disposal options in case they can't get the material moved on the rail in a timely way.
But ultimately, it's, if the contractor can't perform, we're in trouble.
It's not good to have garbage sitting curbside, right? It would need to move eventually, yes.
Okay, and then you had mentioned what goes in today can be, 70% of what goes in today could be diverted.
Right.
And when you say being, can be diverted, that means that the way we, in which we, we remove our trash or recycle our trash, that can help capacity?
It, it can, you know. If we could recycle, like, collect curbside recyclables and put them through processing so that never comes through the county system, that's part of the 70% that's being landfilled today, that we could divert curbside, and it would never come into our landfill. Same thing with yard waste, composting the yard waste instead of putting it into landfill or composting clean wood, like wood pallets, construction pallets and that sort of thing. So yes, recycling makes a difference, and that's why we have to have the sustainable materials management, the 70% recycling goal, hand in hand with these other transfer and disposal strategies so that we can minimize what we export or burn in a mass burn facility or landfill.
All right, well, I guess I'd close with, I have learned a lot about this, and several cities have spoken about the impacts to their cities of having facilities within their city. Several cities have spoken about the impacts, the equity impact on their community members. They said that by having higher rates, sometimes people will take the dump-and-go option, which means that they won't go to the facilities, they'll just dump and go. So I'm super excited to hear that there's programs coming for the lower income so that they have an option, so they're not dumping and going. And I guess I would close with saying that I think, learning what I've learned about trash recently, garbage, I think we need to look long-term at this holistically. It is going to be a problem. It may not be a problem today. We might have alternatives, East Washington, East Oregon, but decades from now, several decades from now, we don't, we want to have been looking at options so that they don't have to deal with the problem several decades from now, so. But thank you for all your work.
Councilmember Olson, you're the last one besides me. I just want to make sure before I dive in. Thank you for your presentation. I have visited Cedar Hills landfill, and I learned a lot, and I would recommend if any council members ever have a chance. It doesn't sound thrilling, but it was actually really interesting. So I, not knowing much, I read the draft comprehensive plan last night. So my questions might be in the weeds a little bit. So you don't have it up, but there's a, there's a table that talks about jurisdictions, the percentage of commercial transactions, and the percentage of self-haul transactions. And it talks about Woodinville, Kirkland, Redmond and Bothell. And what I thought was really an outlier, and I wondered if we have a, if we understand why, was that Woodinville has 100% commercial transactions happening at Houghton. Kirkland 96, Redmond 94. We have 22.
You know, we don't require the commercial haulers to go to any given station. They choose the station that works best for them. So I think it's waste management that's serving Woodinville. They choose Houghton. It works best for them in terms of just travel distance, because the less distance a collection truck has to travel, the more efficient its route is. So the haulers are figuring out the most efficient routes, and so they choose the station that is most efficient for their collection routes. And so that just happens to be kind of how it shakes out, how the contractors are choosing the stations based on rowdy fixtions.
Okay, yeah, it was just really interesting because all the other numbers are, you know, within 10 percentage of each other, but 22% from Bothell just seemed like there was a story behind it. The other question I had was a waste-to-energy facility. I'm assuming that there are, there aren't pollution, air pollution issues with that, that those are, that's somehow captured and doesn't become an issue.
You know, if you, if you read the draft environmental impact statement, it's assumed that all of the state and federal regulations for air quality and, and other emissions are met, and that that protects the environment and human health.
I assumed so, but I just thought I'd ask. So the, the process right now is that the county executive makes the ultimate decision?
It, you know, the last time we did a comp, a comprehensive plan in 2001, the public review draft already had the executive's recommendation out for public review. This time, the public gets to see more options before the executive makes his recommendation, but ultimately, it's the county council that votes on the executive proposed plan, and then also a critical mass of the partner cities.
Okay, well, that's what I was going to ask, is because I could see something as controversial as a transfer station, it being endlessly debated. And so that's, I was wondering, given the timeline, if that's a concern?
You know, it's been a very long discussion about the Northeast Station. In 2007, our county council adopted the, our transfer plan that was developed in conjunction with partner cities that recommended a new Northeast Station, and then over time, that debate continued despite the plan being adopted.
I'm so sorry. I have to interrupt you so we can extend the meeting. So please make a motion. Councilmember McNeil has made a motion to extend it 9:30. Can you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Olson, on favor, please vote. Sorry, I.
Yeah.
Okay. Continuing on our winning streak of unanimous votes.
That's great.
And then Maryam absent excuse.
Okay. So did I get to your question about?
If you did, I was so distracted. I missed the meat of what you said. Something about there was a lot of discussion about it.
Yeah, you know, you were, I think you asked me, you know, isn't it hard to get to a timely decision for a new station like a new Northeast? Yes, it is hard. And that's another reason why a decision now, as part of this comp plan, will get us one step closer to a final decision, just as the disposal options, you know, a 10-year ramp up to get a new disposal option in place is, you know, a challenge. We can do it, but it's 10 years, goes by quickly. It's the same thing with a transfer station, especially if you're looking for a new site. It takes a lot of dialogue with the community, potential host community. It takes a lot of dialogue with the community, potential host communities, with the haulers, about what kind of needs do they have in the design of a station. You know, there's a lot of discussion and then permitting and process that goes into this. We just finished that process with Algonah over the New South County Station, and it was years in the making until we finally ended up with a site and an inter-local agreement that I think that the city and the county are both happy with, but it took a lot of discussion to get there.
And then, so there was no overt recommendation from the comprehensive plan, but there, to me, when I look at page 154, it has a comparison of options for providing capacity for the Northeast service area. It seems rather obvious what the right decision is. And so I'm, I'm just wondering, has there been any discussion prior to the conversation, I guess, at the county council, as far as what the preferred options are?
You know, since 2007, when our cities collaborated with the county on the transfer plan and 17 level of service criteria were identified to help us say, how do we judge whether we need a new station or not? You know, that's all been out there and discussed for years and years. And so that's why you see some of the results of that work, you know, I don't know exactly what page you're referring to, but there is some work in there that says, you know, if you keep the old stations, there were some reasons why modernization had been proposed in the past. It's because it wasn't meeting, you know, the regional goals for how long you wait in line to get into the station, how long it takes to go through the station, that sort of thing.
Well, what I was looking at is the comparisons of keep the Houghton station, a new recycling and transfer station, or a combo, and then the various elements of capital cost, operating criteria, blah, blah, blah. And it kind of gives a green, red, yellow assessment of each. And overwhelmingly, green is the Northeast recycling and transfer station. And so although it doesn't make a recommendation, it seems rather obvious.
If the region wants to have a kind of uniform level of service in all of its urban stations throughout the geography of the regional system, it doesn't need to be uniform, and that's actually one of the questions. If you go to the webs, our website for the comp plan, that's one of the questions in a questionnaire that we have there, you know, do we need to have a uniform type of service in all of our urban stations, or is it okay for one geographic area or one station to have a different combination of services?
Great, thanks. So just following up on Councilmember McNeil, I'm happy to hear that you're looking at equity because for our seniors, it's really becoming quite a burden to still live in this area. And I wanted to follow up, you had asked about roads. I'm assuming that the county does not in any way compensate cities for road maintenance for the extra wear and tear on their roads.
Actually, under your inter-local agreements for solid waste service from, with the county, there is a city mitigation provision where cities that can show impact of county trucks on roads are, could receive mitigation payments.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's been part of your inter-local agreements for at least since 2013.
Well, thanks for clarifying that, because it's an important detail.
Just to jump in, I do want to make it clear that in Bothell, with both of our haulers, we do have discount programs for senior citizens. So both ecology and waste management offer those. It is a form that those residents have to fill out, but we have instituted those programs to assist with those fees, because we do understand the impact of that. And then to the point about the rate structure and the roads and considerations for those, we have vocalized our concerns for that on behalf of the city of Bothell, that we wanted to make sure that it was fair across the system, and if we're paying for the other stations, that we get those services in our area as well. So we are talking about that with King County at our meetings when we attend the advisory committee meetings.
Do we have discounts as well for low income, or just seniors?
Right now, it is just for the seniors. That is the way we establish it with the contract, because that's the system that we have with waste management, but we have not revised that.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for your presentation, appreciate it. Okay, so did you get what you needed from us? I mean, it was kind of unclear what you needed from council regarding this agenda item.
We just wanted to make sure you were aware, there is the public comment period. We are making the public aware of this. We have done social media posts, shared information from the county, made the website available. I also attended the open house session that was available nearby at Kingsgate Library. So we've been available to answer those, and then we've just recommended that people provide the public comment at this point. I did comment as staff when we had our staff review, and then I am submitting some minor edits that I have relating to our haulers for this review. So that's the steps that I was taking.
So I just thought of one more question. So there's a map in the draft of the Northeast area. Are there any sites at all being looked at at this point?
I'm sorry?
Are there any sites for transfer stations currently? Sorry, I thought, you know what, if I were a Bothell citizen, I would want to know.
No, there are no sites actively under consideration. If a choice is, a recommendation is made to go for a new Northeast Station, then a process of dialogue and then eventually identifying sites, environmental review of those sites, and all of that would be triggered.
I was hoping you'd say that, thank you. All right, thanks so much. Moving on to our last agenda item, AB 18034, Fire Department Strategic Plan. And the chief is here to present.
Yay.
Thanks for being patient with us getting to your item.
Now I got to manage the screen. Okay, we're on. So thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council, for having me out here tonight. You've received an electronic copy, and I believe a hard copy, of the five-year strategic plan. And I'd like to, I'm trying to decide if I can do this without my glasses or not. I think I can, but it's kind of late. Give you just a real high-level background into the plan's development and some highlights of what's in the plan. I'm not going to read the plan, there's a smiley face emoji on that one for that for you. So it was noted in the recruitment brochure for the fire chief, the need for a new strategic plan. And once I was hired on September 18th, I began the process of doing that by contacting the Technical Advisor Program, TAP, from CPSC, that's the Center for Public Safety Excellence. Those are the same folks that work, that do the international fire accreditation. So a good group of people, very knowledgeable. And then on November 6th, we began a four-day process of having them come in and helping us with discussions and evaluations that led to the plan. So what we did, the first day of the process is we had community members come in and give input and feedback as to what they wanted from their fire department. So it's real important to note that this is a community-driven strategic plan, and everything else that followed in the planning process after this relied heavily on the input from our external customers. So we looked at what they had to say and took that into consideration as we're doing that. The Technical Advisor Program facilitators held a meeting with community members in the room here on the first day, and I came in and gave a quick introduction, then left, and that was purposely done for no fire representatives here, to give them the opportunity to give us some unfiltered feedback. We wanted to really hear what they had to say and fill out their questionnaires. And you'll see in the document there, they, the facilitators, they put every comment in there, anything that was written down from the public was written, was down there verbatim, which sometimes is a little confusing because we're not exactly sure what they meant. We didn't go back and ask them what you meant by this, we just had comments. So sometimes there's a comment that really, we have to kind of decipher, but most of the time, it was pretty good stuff. We got a lot out of the comments from the public, so that was very helpful. The external stakeholders prioritize what services they really thought were important from the fire service. It's not a big surprise that operations, fire suppression, and emergency medical services were on top of the list. We took these priorities, along with their written comments, and started the, was kind of the springboard for everything we did in the next three days of the process. So days two through four, November 7th, 8th, and 9th, were spent with internal stakeholders, the folks from the fire department. We had 21 fire personnel participate in the process, which is about a third of the department. We had, every level of the department was represented, we had firefighters, lieutenants, battalion chiefs, labor, admin staff, just about a really good mix of folks from the department, and a lot of excitement and buy-in in the process. So again, we started this thing with what the citizens, the external stakeholders, gave us, and we started to look at all the facets of the fire department. What do we do? We looked at everything. And it started with mission, vision, values, we reevaluated those. We examined our core programs like fire suppression and EMS. We looked at supporting services, like other city departments, how we interact with them, training, other physical resources. And then we spent a lot of time doing a SWOT analysis process. If you're not familiar with that, that's a process where you look at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, both internal and external to your environment. So it's, it took a lot of, a lot of brain power to go through this. It was, it was three really long days, but they did a really good job going through all this. And I just, I thought it was important, just to, it's in there, but just to kind of go over the mission, vision, values very quickly. We updated the mission, the original one was just three words, it was the preparation, prevention, and performance. But we really wanted to add to that and make it a little more meaningful, and we thought exceptional service would help that out. So now it reads, committed to exceptional service through preparation, prevention, and performance. The vision, the goal on that one was to get us, to give us a bold, audacious, future-forward, and unique vision, something that's, we also wanted to keep it very brief, we didn't want to go on for pages, and to make it kind of memorable. So what we came up with is improving the quality of our life for our team, our partners, and those we are proud to serve while engaging the community, making every customer's day better. So obviously, it's pretty, pretty bold and audacious, but that's what we're trying to do, where we are striving to do that every day. And then our values, we really tried to look at and keep close to the values of the city that we have now, and we included those on the front, inside the cover, the current city mission, vision, and values. And so we think we came pretty close to that and still reflect what we, the fire department, was feeling in this regard. So teamwork, integrity, compassion, humility, and progressive. So what we got through here on this was the, through the SWOT analysis and all that we'd gone through to this point, we identified some critical issues or service gaps that currently exist in the department. We feel by addressing these, hopefully correcting these perceived issues and gaps, we could make ourselves into a very high-performing organization. During this process, we identified eight strategic initiatives, they're listed here, or goals, along with several supporting objectives for each goal. So there's eight goals with several objectives going on there. And these are, these are listed in the document in relative importance, but it's interesting, it's important to note that they're not, they're not meant to go in sequential order. We can take them in any order we need to, especially some of the objectives for each goal, it might be easier to tackle a couple of objectives in a different goal than another one. So it's very fluid, but they were kind of listed in priority, as seen by the fire department. You'll also see on the objectives, each objective has a timeframe on that. And the timeframe is to help us get a start and end to that objective once it's begun. So because there's so much going on there, we may not be able to get to certain objectives for two or three years, just because of time commitments and other things going on. So as we plow through this or attack it, we might not get to it for a while. So even though an objective might have two to three months, that is to say, once we start working on that objective, we should be able to hopefully accomplish it in two to three months. So if you have any questions, that's kind of, that's come up before, just to clarify that. So kind of get to the business end of the whole strategic plan, and I'm just going to just, I just, I put the title of the goal, I didn't put objectives, we don't want to go too far into that. We are frankly just getting into ourselves, we've started to divvy this up and spread out, spread the wealth, as it were, to people in the department to start putting their names on these to start working on. So I'll just give a real high flyover on this. The asset management really has to do with facilities and apparatus. You know, we've got phenomenal people and to respond to calls, but without the proper equipment, obviously, and places to put them and their gear, we can't deliver our services. So we've already started working on this goal, and we are performing an analysis of facilities to determine any capital improvement needs, and we'll also be looking at our fleet needs and replacement schedule, that's part of this goal. The workforce planning is looking to identify the current and future services and workload capacity and make sure we have realistic workloads. I mean, there's a lot to do, and want to be able to sure, sure we can do a good job of what we're doing. Another part of this is, it's kind of hard to see on there, but we actually looked at and adjusted our organizational chart. We brought support services under a direct report. To me, it just made more sense than have it where it was. Streamlined it, I didn't have overwhelming amount of direct reports, so it worked out well for that. So that's one of the changes we've made on that one. Training, this is always an issue at fire departments, especially now, we're looking at new and increasing training, it's coming on really quickly. We've got, the demands have given us, we need to analyze the gap between our training requirements and our capacity. And this year, actually, we already started working on this, we are, we've listed out everything we can think of that we are required to do, and we're going to see if we can actually get it done in a year. I would be surprised if there's any fire departments actually doing what they are required to do by law. It's amazing what the stuff we have to do, but we're going to, we're making an effort, we're going to do our best job at it, and part of this is getting organized and going through there and seeing what we can do, to give us a better shot at that. Because we want to provide training programs for all our job titles, all our ranks, all our specialties, all our credentials, to shift and day personnel. We want to get everybody trained up to the best we can. Succession planning, I think I've, I think this has been on every agenda I've ever attended at any fire conference ever. It's always been on there. It's not going away, actually here at Bothell, most of our senior staff could retire immediately. I think we only have two on the senior staff that have a couple of years left before they could retire. Not that they're going to, but it's an important deal for us, we're working on that. One of the things we're going to do is to start a group or a committee and look at all our current job descriptions and positions, and to try to develop a mentorship program for those, to get people kind of plugged in to help each other along, to bring each others up there, because we have got a lot of great experience, and we'd like to capture that and train the new folks coming up before we lose that experience. Health and wellness is another big thing in the fire service right now. I'd like, we're going to get a group together to analyze our current health and wellness program, which frankly, I don't think is very good. I think we'll discover that, but we're going to take a little hard look at that. We've already started a peer support program, we've got the wheels rolling on that, that was noted in this, and so we're going in the right direction on that. I think that's going to be really helpful for us. And we're going to create a much-needed physical fitness and nutrition program. So we have nothing really on the books for that right now, and I think that'll be, be good for us. And there's a lot of excitement in that. Internal communications, always a work in progress. We're viewing it right now to see what we have in place as far as what do we do, how can we improve that, things like annual evaluations, those are a great internal communication tool. We've got several things in our SOPs that refer to internal communications, and then we've other information dissemination techniques. And we want to make sure that all our employees are trained up on existing, enhanced, or new communications. As technology changes, as things change, we want to make sure we are taking advantage of that to make sure that we have good internal communications. And community relations, this is always important, but especially at this time right now, in light of the fact that we're considering a public safety levy coming up in the fall, we need to look at all our established community outreach programs, such as CPR, CERT, station tours, fire prevention in schools, and create, we've identified creating the focus groups in the community to identify other outreach needs, if we can do that. And then external relations, we can always get better at working better with intergovernmental relationships with other city departments, WSP, dispatch, Snow County, there's just a ton of people. We started listing off organizations and intergovernmental agencies that we deal with. It's amazing when you start thinking about how we all interact together. And just by doing that, we're going to enhance the relationship to create a mutual benefit for us and our partners. So how do we quantify the success of this plan? Well, it's definitely us and our partners. So, how do we quantify the success of this plan? Well, it's definitely an active document, and I said from the start, and we are going to keep to this, this is not going to be a document we just put on the shelf and forget about. We're going to take this off at least annually, update it. It's going to be reviewed annually. We have the document in a Word form purposely for that, so we can update it and make changes as needed. The success in this is not going to be measured necessarily in completing every goal and objective, but in making positive measurable movement in these things, making movement in whatever we can do. We're going to make an effort to get through as much as we can. It's a lot of stuff to do. I'd love to do it all. Is it practical? I don't know. Some of it's time, some of it's money, but we're going to do our best to make efforts to get through there. So, we'll need support from the council. We appreciate anything we get from you, buy-in from the department members. We're already getting that. And regular communications with the public is going to be important. So, the objectives, actually, some of this may change as we go along. We talk to the people, the facilitators helping us out with this. And it's quite common, as you go along of the five-year plan, for things to change in your environment. And so, again, with being a Word document, we have the ability and plan to update this thing as we go along. So, if we find objectives that just aren't working right for us, we'll go ahead and change them with the thought of pushing forward with the overarching goals we have. And then the last thing on here is, this is kind of like, you know, it's like life. This is really, it's not a destination. This is not going to get us, you know, it's not going to be the end-all. It's just the journey. It's just how we get to the next step and get better to be a high-performing organization. And I think this document will really help us get there. Any questions? I know that was quick and fast.
Councilmember McNeil.
I had an off-the-topic question.
Sure.
So, you mentioned fire alarm drills, working with the community, within the community. You guys recently responded to a fire drill at Woodmore Elementary School on a Saturday, where somebody had pulled the fire alarm.
Okay.
Probably a child or somebody pulled it in the middle of a basketball game. And nobody, including myself, knew what to do except for to exit the building. I bring this up because with, you know, the recent events in Florida, it concerns me as a parent in understanding what we should do. Is there training we can get as a community member that we can help teach people what they should do in certain circumstances?
You know, I don't know that one. I know they teach it in the schools for, you know, in-school sessions with the kids to do. Actually, I'm following up with Chief Cummings in light of the most recent shooting. We're actually going to meet next week with the police to go over our current procedures for that. And perhaps that could be a good topic, just to see if we can come up with something that we might be able to get out to the public. We think about that all the time, unfortunately, and how we respond, but that's a good point. We don't really think about public per se and what they could do, but that's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And I think I really appreciate the work that the citizens also participated in for your communication and their comments. I particularly like the strategy that you're using and the fact that it's a journey. But one of the things I have discovered through school safety, public safety, is what is important is not just the internal communication, but communication with all of the other people who would be involved in public safety. So, the schools, the police, you know, all of those ones, if they're finally talking together and meeting and doing strategic planning about safety and how you report. Like in Florida, they had a lot of people talking about the young man who had problems, but nobody was talking to each other.
Right.
And so, that is one of the big things I have seen in our schools as well. Some of our plans actually do bring everyone together so that they could all discuss how we provide that safety.
Okay. Well, that's a great idea. And part of that discussion with police was to bring in North Shore schools and see if our plans are jiving with their plans and make sure we're talking on that line. The communications, that's a good point. When they're, when we were identifying these different goals, we were just trying to label them. Communications is very important, and that was actually a part of the external relations was communications. It's buried in there. It just didn't make the title. But we are very aware of that and want to make sure we do communicate well externally, too.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I was waiting for you, Councilmember Agnew.
I didn't see anything in there that talked about changing our ISO rating or trying to improve our ISO rating. Are you going to try to tackle that at some point in time?
Yes. That's true. It was not in there. We, the, I'm not sure when WSRB is due around here. I'll have to check into that. But I will do that and give us hopefully enough lead time to start looking at that. That's something I think we can improve upon, especially if we are able to accomplish some of this stuff. We're going to be in much better shape for WSRB coming through. They have different components in that, but I think we're in a good position to make advancement in that. We have to, there, most of what we do, we're in pretty good shape. Just, it's the points and they're so fine. And I have to look at our last rating and see how close we were. And since our last rating, they've redone the scheduling, the rating scheduling. And so, it's just a little bit different. So, even though, if we got rated today based on the new schedule, it might be a different rating than we got before because things have just tweaked a little bit. So, I will look into that. No definite plans for that, but it will be on the radar for sure.
Okay. And then response times. I know our response times are right around, I think we average around nine minutes. And I think King County wants us from three to seven minutes, if at all possible. How are we going to address that, or are we going to try to address that in the future?
Well, I'm looking at that closely right now. Part of that is data. We're having some issues. I'm going through, we just changed record-keeping systems and we're changing over. And so, we're trying to scrub some of the data. But that's very important. When I first got here, I noticed, I don't want to get too much time here, but response times, there's three factors in response time. There's dispatch.
Can you just pause for one moment so we can extend?
Oh, darn. I thought I was going to make it.
Councilmember McNeil made a motion to extend to 9:40. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Agnew, thank you. Please place your votes. Apologies. We always try to be, you know, optimistic. And our streak continues, unanimous with Mayor Rayum absent and excused. Please continue.
Okay. So, I'll try to make it really brief and as less confusing as I can. Response times for us, there's three components. There's dispatch, there's turnout time, and there's actual response driving time to get there. And all of those are from when you call 911 to when we show up at the door, right? And that's what the citizen cares about. They don't care about anything else. They want you at the door. So, but different people count those times differently. Some fire departments only count the turnout times and response times and ignore the dispatch time, which is a huge deal. So, our current response times, our response level for the city does not include dispatch. It's just turnout and drive time, right? The only component of that that we directly can impact immediately is turnout time, getting out of the barn, getting from when the tones go off to get in the rig and start rolling. Some of that stuff, some of the response times, the travel time, is dictated by streets, population, what's going on, time of day, all that, you know, weather. And we don't have a lot in that either. So, I am actively looking at that. When I first came on, getting back to where I started, I was made aware that our turnout times were frankly not really good. In fact, they were terrible. And I had, it was just not acceptable. And I made the troops aware of that. It's not going to hold. We need to improve that. And they have done a really good job of bringing those down. We are much, much improved. And now, the fact we have a new reporting system on board, I'm going to start collecting that data and look at that to see what our overall response time is with turnout and travel time. I think it's going to be much better than it has been in the past. So, it'll be in the, we'll have a report for the 2017 annual reports coming out in a few weeks. That's going to have, that's going to be a challenge because we've got almost all through September with bad turnout times, and then September through the end of the year with better turnout times. So, our overall turnout is not going to look good. But going forward, it's going to be better. So, I'm looking at that. I don't see why we can't get down to a reasonable turnout time. Nine minutes is too long, I think, yeah. So, we're going to look at that and see where we're at and try to improve upon that as best we can. And just a quick note, our dispatch is really quite good. Norcom, their average overall, their calls from when they pick up the phone from somebody to when they get us rolling is about a minute, which is industry standard. It's really good. There's other dispatches that aren't nearly that good. So, they're very consistent and very good. So, we don't really have too much problem with that. But we're just trying to handle the things we can as far as getting, when you pick up the phone, when we show up, really making an effort to do that.
And I saw you had a peer-to-peer. We talked today at the EMS Task Force and the Regional Subcommittee about peer-to-peer evaluations and trying to get the training regionally for everybody. So, that may help with some of your cost with that, but...
Yeah, that'd be great. We just, we have four people that have gone through some initial training right now. We have many more have been identified and would be interested in doing that. And they're trying to make that, up till now, peer-to-peer has been more of an inside-the-department. So, if we have someone on the list from the department, someone has an issue, they can call this person up and just talk. It's just kind of like a person to talk to. It's not really, they don't give you any advice. They don't do that. They just, they listen to you and try to help you out. And now, what's going on regionally is we are actually, we're spreading this to King County wide. So, if you have an issue and you don't feel comfortable talking to anybody in your department, you can call somebody, another firefighter in another department who's on this peer support program and talk to them. So, it's really a great idea. And if we can get any help on that, that'd be awesome.
Consider it done. Thank you.
Can always count on Councilmember Agnew to ask those questions. The rest of us don't even know we need to know. So, I guess I'm last. Thank you for this work. It's really important work. And I want to thank the stakeholders who took part because it sounds like it was a commitment. But I was curious, how or what was the outreach for the stakeholders?
Well, we kind of based it on, when we did the RFA study several years ago, they went on dissimilar outreach to get public input. And at that time, they had a list of over 100 folks they put feelers out to. We went back and used that same list, had to update it. We only had about 85 that we could keep track, you know, if things changed, emails and whatnot. So, we have about 85 people we sent notices out to. Those included the business community, Chamber of Commerce, small business, education, North Shore schools, PTAs, service organizations, Kiwanis, local newspapers, homeowners associations, and citizens. We tried to get a smattering of all kinds of folks. So, we sent about three weeks ahead of time, 85 responses out. And then about a week ahead of time, we started making some calls and some emails to folks that we either knew or thought we could get into the program. We had 21 people come out for the RFA, for that process. They had 26 people come out. So, it's not great. I guess if we had more time and maybe more phone calls, we could have got some people out. The folks that came out seemed really engaged. And it was a good, it was a good cross section of the city. So, we're happy with the people that did come out. But I agree, it could have been more.
Well, the only reason I ask is because I had constituents say, hey, I didn't know there was a stakeholder group. I might have contributed, so...
We did not put it out like in the paper, you know, and just, you know, like an all-call kind of thing. Something we could have done. I was frankly going off the fact that we had this list from before that I thought would be a good list to start with, and it had a great cross-reference of people, so...
Yeah, okay. And then, just real quickly, I thought it was really interesting that, I forget what it was, on the community expectations or one of those lists, that the number one thing people wanted was fire service. And then number two is EMS. Only because, isn't like 80% of our calls are more EMS-related?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, I just thought it was really interesting that people are apparently more worried about fire than EMS. I don't know. I didn't know how to take that.
I think it's the name thing or just a historical deal from the department. Some departments are changing their name to Fired Medical. We've gone back. It's in the, we, as part of this process, we looked at everything, like I said. And we even looked at our name. And I was kind of pushing for personally, I was trying to get to go Fired Medical because that's kind of what we do, you know, medical. But the group really wanted to kind of go, kind of get a retro, I guess, look and go back to Fire Department. And it was their call. And so, we're going to do that as far as the name. But I agree. Yeah, it is 80% of what we do. And we're good at it. And then we like doing it, so...
Yeah. Well, and you do it well. I hear all the time about your service and your department's service and how much the community really appreciates when someone comes out and they go the extra mile. Like, I think one time I saw a story about someone emptying someone's refrigerator and getting it refrigerated so they wouldn't lose their food. That's beyond. Anyway, well, thank you very much. It was really interesting. And I look forward to seeing what, where it goes from here.
Okay. You bet. Thank you.
Thanks. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Councilmember McNeil, and seconded by Councilmember McAuliffe. Please place your votes. Tom, you broke the streak. You broke the streak. We were going for an all-unanimous vote night, and you ruined it. Okay. All in favor, except Councilmember Agnew. We're adjourned.